Okay, it's six thirty. Um, we'll go ahead and start.
Martin?
Yeah.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Cope?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Looks like we have three items on the agenda. First one, presentation from Iowa State University Department of Civil Instruction and Environmental Engineering. We heard Johnson, Byron, and she's so far.
Good evening. I gave a little bit of background during the early design process for the East of Merle Hay neighborhood, city staff, and both engineering. Um, ensuring flows in the down carrying seventy-two inch drunk form store, which is near capacity, take on increased flows. About some outside, uh, outside of the box thinking sixty-inch parallel storm sewer trunk may need to be laid. Um, down the old road right away. Looking at alternatives and soil conditions, um, the current storm sewer basins and system was designed in solid. Uh, treatment goals identified during the project planning and design phase were to reduce, uh, flow volumes of the storm sewer network. Including the water quality flow volume of the ancient or quarter rain. Additional treatment goals were to reduce the, uh, time of concentration of peak flow, peak flows. And, uh, generate, generated during emergency events. Uh, in twenty twenty, the city supported an Iowa State University grant application. For funding from the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Scholarship. To study the effectiveness of the infiltration basin design and constructed. Eastern Merle Hay between the fifty-fifth Avenue and Northwest sixty-second Avenue. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Lulu Dickey with the Iowa State University Department of Civil Construction and Environmental Engineering to provide an overview of the report findings.
Thank you for the introduction again. I am Lulu Dickey. I'm a graduate student at Iowa State University. And I am here with Dr. Chris Raymond to share our findings from evaluation of fire retention cell intake structures. Um, for the fire retention cells that we studied are located in the Merle Hay neighborhood on the fourth, uh, fifty-seventh street. And this is part of a larger water resource restoration project, as Matt said, um, that received some funding from the state revolving fund. Uh, the fire retention cell we study is, um, located in product area F of that resource restoration project. Which is shown in red on the map, the fire retention cell is shown in yellow. So it's situated in between Beaver Creek and New York River. Merle Hay is one of the city's older neighborhoods, so this area lacked adequate stormwater infrastructure. And as urbanization increased, um, flooding and water pumping were, um, noticed in the area. Which spurred a project to relieve some of the stormwater issue. Um, in this project, the goal was to use the green street approach. Um, which uses stormwater management practices to reduce, reduce runoff quantity and quality. Um, so when we're thinking of runoff quantity, we want to reduce the amount of runoff volume and slow down the water. The goals are definitely to. Reach the predevelopment condition flows or nearly reach the predevelopment condition flow. When we talk about water quality goals, we're thinking of contaminants such as nutrients, sediment, metals, and other contaminants that might be found in stormwater. Uh, some criteria that were used in designing these fire retention cells come from the Iowa Storm Water Management Manual. And these are the unified site and criteria. As Matt said, the goal of these fire retention cells were to treat smaller storm events. Uh, so that's the initial quarter stormer then, um, which is the water quality volume. And the goal of that treatment is to, uh, reduce pollution. The other storm events that, um, these projects were designed to treat is the channel protection line. That is the runoff volume generated from a twenty-four hour, one-year storm event, and in this area, that would be about two point four inches spring. Uh, so conditions in this area were very suitable for fire retention. Um, these, the soils in this area are a high weathered slough group A, which are very well-drained soils, they're fine sand. And in fact, um, one of the neighbors in the area told me that, um, before the project was initiated, they actually had three inches that had no outlet. And so while stormwater entered the ditch and infiltrate more clearly into the soil. Uh, so we know this area is a good candidate for fire. Uh, because of that, these fire retention cells, um, were designed by both engineering and they were designed without undergrounding. Which means that any water that enters the fire retention fault basin will infiltrate and exfiltrate your groundwater and it will not go back into the source. Another unique factor of the fire retention fault system is the intake structure. Uh, and this intake structure allows flow to flow in off the street and through those great settings, the down into the structure. That is unique, um, from most fire retention cell design. Uh, most fire retention cells would use something simple like a curb cut it or just a shallow channel to, um, bring water directly in from the street. But the Johnson design is unique in that it has. Inside the intake structure, water is routed through two internal meters. So as the agreement began, water will enter the structure and begin to fill. As the water level increases, um, it will reach to a level of the first year. That layer allows water to enter, enter the fire retention fault basin. That is where infiltration occur. If the storm event continues and enough flows generated, the water level will continue to increase and water will flow over the sign. If the second layer is activated, that water will go directly to the storm. This acts as an overflow to prevent flooding. There's a third way that water connects to the structure that's through a drainage standpipe at the bottom. And it's just to prevent any standing water from accumulating in the structure. Our objective of evaluating the fire retention cell intake is to see how they influence the overall effectiveness of the fire retention cell system. And again, we're focusing on the water quality goal, so we want to reduce the water and float it down. And water quality. In this case, we look at nutrient content. So to see that we have collected some samples, um, and being monitored wire. So we collected inflow samples in the fire retention cell intake. And outflow samples to the storm sewer and fire retention fault. We also collected some sediment samples of the accumulated sediment from the bottom of the intake structure twenty-two. And throughout the project, we monitor your water level inside. This field data was used to calibrate the model of the intake structure in runoff area. Um, and with this calibrated model, we were able to simulate the predevelopment conditions and the, um, close involvement condition. Um, we were able to see that the runoff volume over the study period, um, that went to the storm sewer was reduced by forty percent on average. Um, so we saw the highest production in twenty twenty with a forty-three percent reduction and below it's been twenty twenty-one. But overall, we have very good production in runoff volume over the study period.
Do you want me to answer a quick question? That, that chart you have there is three different years? Is, is that the concept?
That's correct.
So we're looking at basically, yeah, just over.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Um, so we also looked at flow rate and the structure was effective for slowing the water down. Um, so in this figure, we're showing, um, the outflow to the storm sewer in purple. Inflow is in blue, the flow to the fire retention cell is in green. And the flow, um, that hypothetical flow from the predevelopment condition is shown in black. And so if we compare the purple and the black, we can see that the, um, flow reaction actually exceeded those predevelopment goals. For every storm event that is shown on the chart. We looked at nutrient concentrations in the inflow and we found that they were very low. Um, that means the nutrients were not concerned at this site. However. Yeah, you want me to go back to the?
Yeah. So prior to this system, were. Were the nutrients. Was that, was that a concern about the, where you're able to measure how much nutrients were in the stormwater in this area or is the natural infiltration? Of the area to kind of reduce the nutrients higher?
Right, so, um, you asked if we knew what the concentrations were for the project mission. Okay, um, we were not involved in, um. In the design, this was a scientific engineering. Uh, I do not believe that they took samples of runoff, but generally stormwater does contain. They can contain high concentration levels from lungs because of vertebrae. Uh, so we looked at that just to see if there was a problem and we didn't. Here, however, that could be elsewhere, there could be nutrients. Did I answer the question?
Yeah.
Yes, so, uh, so it's been a solid concentration where, very confident in the inflow. Uh, so we continued to monitor those throughout the study period. And we have an average, um, concentration for the inflow compared that to the average concentration for the outflow that is going to the storm sewer. And so we can see there's a considerable reduction in flow concentration of about a hundred and twenty milligrams per liter. And that's being reduced down to about seventy-six milligrams per meter in the outflow. Which is, uh, very good because the recommended limit for stormwater is about seventy-five milligrams per liter. So we're meeting the water quality goal. And this is very apparent if you go to the site, um, you can see that the structure collects quite a lot of sediment in the bottom. And we didn't want to, um, estimate how much, so we took a sample in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. And, um, we were able to estimate that about six hundred and forty pounds sediment were captured between May and October.
That would be kind of one impact, right?
Yes, just for.
And what happens to the sediment? Is it collected in?
Um, so, from my understanding, these are vacuum, vacuum trucks, I guess, cleaned with a vacuum truck every year. I don't know if that is once a year or twice a year, um.
We generally clean them annually in the fall. And then what do you do with the sediment?
We have to haul it to the landfill because it's considered hazardous waste. Not with the oils off of the river.
Yeah, so the, the fact that this, um, sediment is captured in the intake structure is actually a negative for these systems. Um, because it can help prevent one of the most common problems that we see in fire retention cells, um, which occurs when. Fine sediment settle on the cell media and flog the soil, which prevents infiltration and water quality treatment. So by capturing these sediments in the intake structure, we can prevent that flogging from occurring. And that also helps to, um, prevent a top plate replacement of the cell media. So the key takeaway from the study, uh, this intake system effectively reduces the runoff volume and peak flow rate delivered to the storm sewer network. The intake structure functions as a retention basin which slows the water down. Uh, we did, we found nutrient concentration in the inflow of the site to be low, so nutrients were not focused on this study. However, if, um, at another site, nutrient concentrations were higher, there may be trade-offs to this design. Because some of the runoff is captured in the intake structure and not delivered into the fire retention cell basin where further treatment can occur. Uh, this design is very effective for reducing suspended solid concentration. Um, concentrations delivered to the storm sewer are reduced and had the recommended limit on average. A large portion of sediment was captured in the intake structure, um, which can, um, improve the overall lifespan and function of the fire retention cell. So overall, this system that will water quantity and quality. Thank you for your time and attention. Um, my contact information is here if you would like to reach out with questions and if we have to answer questions now.
House have any questions?
Mary, I do have a couple of questions. The, the, the first question has to do with that, uh, kind of third release that you talked about, the steam pipe. Are, are those, or did those have to be, uh, manually activated to allow overflow of the, 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 the?
Right, so the, um, steam pipe in the bottom structure is what you're referring to?
Yes.
Um, it has several small orbits, so, um, it, it, anytime the water, the water level is high enough that it's creating the orbits, which. The bottom one is pretty much at the bottom of the structure, water can naturally flow out. So, um, there is no need to activate that, it just automatically will activate. And certainly the orbits are small, it's a pretty small, um, flow rate, so it's going to retain that water for a longer period of time.
Okay. The, the second question, you talked about that kind of overflow into the, the bio media itself. Um. Does that need to be replaced or on a regular basis to maintain effectiveness? Uh, do we worry about confection of all as that overflow in the?
So I think with. What I found with this intake structure is that it is, um. It's helping to prevent that flogging that we would see sometimes in these systems. And, um. If you're asking about maintenance that you serve are, uh, inside of the, the basin. I haven't seen any problems myself. There, there are some. Pass the weir inside the basin, they have certain rocks that kind of helps to, um, prevent any scour from occurring. So from anytime that I've seen it functioning, I haven't seen any problems with, um, that we require any maintenance.
My last question has to do with, you did provide it on your slides, kind of a alternate example of inflow. Uh, and you commented that often times it's just occurred that to the true. Um, had a study as far as is this model more or less effective than some of those other models? And part of that is that effectiveness based on measures, measures that you identify. But also obviously the one that you care about as well or need to care about is cost, uh, in that regard. Can you comment on any of those factors?
Yes, um, so you're asking a comparison to the curb cut design itself. The curb cut obviously is much less heavily in here, um. But the benefit of this intake structure is that it can prevent that flogging that you would see in a curb cut. Because it has the pre-treatment that occurs in the intake structure. But there is the trade-off, like I said, where some of that water is retained in the intake structure and never makes it into the fault basin. Um, so it's very site dependent on what the water treatment goals are. In this case, if the sediment was high, I think that this intake structure is effective at the site. Um. We do plan to do some additional analysis to try to understand how to balance those trade-offs at different sites. Um, it is, these types of practices are very site dependent, just.
Thank you.
Very much. So, and this might be a question for Matt as well. How many of these bio retention cells do we have, Johnson?
I will have to get you that number, but we generally have, um. There's well over twenty under, under east of Merle Hay, uh, road.
Uh, they're currently all in the eastern Merle Hay.
Yeah, this, so this was, if we didn't do this project, we had to run a parallel fifteen-inch main down to Beaver Creek. The seventy-two inch main that starts up here next to Wallace Elementary, um, on fifty-ninth and runs down is at capacity. Um, it can't take anymore flows into it, so. This was with the natural sandy soils that we had. This was a good way to return and to not have to construct a full sixty-inch parallel main. Uh, I can get you the exact number of intakes that we have, but, uh. They're very easy to maintain. Uh, I know that the forest weeds out the bases where the flowers. It's not growing back with the media is. That also helps take some of those, uh, nutrients out of the soil and feed them to the plants, so. Um, I haven't seen a lot of, a lot of having to stir up the, uh, those types of soils back there in the back of it, um. Really just cleaning them out with the leaves and debris that fall in those bases. Uh, generally about once a year and then we do clean out the contents extra seven, so they get trapped inside those.
And do you, when the vision using, I mean, this, these types of bio retention cells and other parts of the community. In which maybe the sandy soil element isn't present or is that sandy soil element really kind of. Fundamental to this type of process being successful?
It's really fundamental to our being successful. What do you do? So the underground detention that we do have built into these bases would have to get larger and that would increase your costs. So when, when we look at going north of sixty-second and to the east of Merle area, I don't believe our soil conditions. Really allow for this type of infrastructure we constructed more, so we'll be looking at, at, at different ideas and, and.
Because you can't do that exfiltration approach, right?
Matt, can I ask one more question? You, you brought up a point about that sediment that you removed and, and it never gone on. So the materials that, that could be a hazard can have to be disposed of appropriately. For the materials, however, that overflow into that media, um, do we worry at all about the concentrations of, of that hazardous material instead of it. Flowing away from those residential areas or things like that that we're actually concentrating?
Uh, I wouldn't say that. I guess we haven't really looked into that or measured it, but I would say that it filters out because it filters through the media, it filters through the sand. I think it filtered a lot of it out. I think that would show me some of the data.
I, I saw that with the nutrients, I just didn't know about some of those oils and other materials, but I was finding, I guess, the, the, the more hazardous components.
Right.
Council and Burkhardt, I, I think that, I think that they are. Improving the water substantially and otherwise it would go in a pipe and the pipe would take it directly one to large streams. With no infiltration and no, uh, sediment removal, so. I get what you're saying about leaving, uh, residue perhaps that's not great in those biosols, but it's not a vegetable garden. So I think that we are improving things on a level that is more, more than.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you very much.
With a great presentation and very much.
Thank you, Kristen. Moving on to the next item, just to discuss the adoption of new residential rooms.
Hello, um, yeah, so we're looking at, uh, hitting the residential code. Uh, to streamline some of the processes that were within. We're, we're looking at maintaining the two thousand fifteen property maintenance code. We added some, uh, additional definitions, changed some of the requirements a little bit so that they were closely matched the existing codes. Uh, we printed out from the building code and stuff of that nature. Uh, so we're looking forward to the, um, guidance from you as far as whether or not we're looking forward to this or continue on with the existing number of codes we had. Uh, one of the key components that we did change is we did adjust the fees, uh, and we're looking at changing it to a, to a, to a, to a, to a, the current system, which is a. Um, inspection fee charged only when they required inspection. The reason we are looking at that, uh, that model would be it's easier for us to, um. For budgeting because it's a continuous every year it could change. Versus trying to guess which projects will be due for inspection on which cycle. So it, it'll help us to budget and it should help the property owners, uh, manager companies to know exactly what year these will be. I would ask for any questions you guys may have.
So what would be the, what would be the argument for not going forward with these changes?
Um, only in the workability of the rental code. Uh, there's a lot of items in there. There's. It has requirements that, um, are not consistent with the building code. So once we issue the certificate, I can see, for example, for multi-hand dwelling. A part of the building. By the time that they have the initial inspection, there are items that are in the rental code that are not required by the building code. So they would have to make changes within that first inspection period to be compliant. Um, and there are just other items within there that makes interpretation hard, uh, makes important part, that makes it confusing for the draft designers.
So would it make more sense to. Make changes to the rental code at the same time as we make changes to the building code? So that they are consistent or are there parts of the rental code that are not inconsistent with the building code and we should move forward with those pieces?
Um, uh. The rental code, I don't know, needs to be updated. What is making this building go? A lot of the time, what we do, what I, what I try to do in the proposed is. When there is something like that, that we understand changes routinely, we reference that code. Um, so that way, for example, the fire code, because it is a retroactive code. So rather than put a stagnant code requirement here, we reference the fire code and said. Uh, in accordance with the city of Johnson fire code. Uh, so we try to anticipate that, um, I just, I don't know that there's a huge benefit in updating this one as frequently, uh, as the building goes.
What are other communities doing?
As far as.
Updating their own.
Um. Unfortunately, I didn't really, that affects you. I know Brian is just starting their rental program, so they're working through that. Uh, I don't know the timeline as far as updating the rental code goes. Um, I don't know where I came from. They hadn't been touched in quite a long time. They opted to do a minor change that they needed. And, uh, I can definitely reach out to the other jurisdictions and find out what they, what type of, uh, a contract that they are on.
Other council questions?
Anyway, uh, what I, we're from the, we're in, we're in, I understand that you tried to. More away from inspection fee based, doing registration and registration process, that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so. From what I know, it's an inspection, like physical inspection of the waste collection.
Uh, no, we're still going to do the inspection. The inspection is part of the registration.
Okay.
So it, it's instead of going to inspection based fee, it's just an annual registration fee. You're still going to have to have the same two-year, uh, rental inspection cycle. So we'll, we'll still come out and inspect the property, but there'll be no additional charge at that point. Outside of extending any circumstances.
Saying that we stopped two years, charging fee every two years, we're charging fee every year and adding to a, a inspection fee that's following back.
Correct.
And what is going to rate of, uh, inspection rate, who gives me what's cost that?
Um, currently, um, currently the inspection fee is. Uh, single man or multiple?
Single man.
Single man currently is seventy-five hours.
Thirty-five hours, and you're going to change that to an annual registration for seventy-five dollars a year?
No, it would be, so what I did is I took the fees that were here for two years, essentially split them in half. And then worked with them to make sure that it covers the possibly inspected. Um, so the single man would be forty dollars or, or I'm sorry, every year. Comes out to eighty dollars for a two-year period.
Okay. That's reasonable.
Yeah, but.
So, so you, are, how many rental units do we have?
Um, it's just over three thousand.
And the objective is to inspect them.
Every two years by ordinance, yes.
Okay. And what are some of the issues? What are the certain? Would you say of the three thousand? Um. What percentage of them do you find to be in kind of a concerning condition? You guys, you guys do a report each, you know, periodically and kind of reviewing the rental units and. You know, trends you're seeing or. What, what, what is kind of the, it's sort of like we have a board on. You know. Fire calls, police calls. What do we have in each, how can we kind of, uh, rental units in the city that's able to kind of compare and contrast?
Uh, we don't. We can sure look into it. Um, I know when speaking against that, there's a lot of times what we're noticing is emergency lights and they have signs that aren't working. Or had a move, smoke that there is a big one. Uh, fire extinguishers was another one. A lot of real minor details, you know, GIs that aren't working, stuff like that in here.
Do you, do you have issues or significant concerns with overcapacity? Issues of where it's clear that too many people are really, you know, really.
Uh, not, not aware, no.
I just, I think at some point it might make some sense to. For us to be able to get sort of a handle on, you know, three thousand units is a lot. Percentage wise, the housing units, but that's, that's. You know, one of those twenty-five percent of all the housing units, but it's. So that means twenty-five percent of our residents, there, if it's, let's say it is twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of our residents will be in, in the house. It would be, I think, be helpful for us to do to, 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 finally, what's good about that housing and what is. Unmanned, so just to think about how that, that'd be interesting kind of approach and how many of those. Ways to see people that from, because I think lots of times I hear people expressing concerns about. Rental housing, you know, even if it's hard to go. You know, whether that, you know, what kind of, what's just standing, you know, a little of this, what that is behind.
True, yeah, we can definitely explore that, um. I'm very well solid.
And I do think it is appropriate for us to do the code, I guess, as a question. Um, and I think the, the idea of charging the fee. As opposed to driving and driven by inspection, go ahead and charge the fee and then not tie it to the inspection if I support that.
Out of my, my one comment, I. I do agree, uh, with those comments that I, I think we should move forward with the, the code, uh, and, and also with the fees. You borrowed, uh, some phrasing from the previous, however, at the bottom of the table, the original piece schedule, there's an asterisk, uh, still there. Um, however, I don't see any actual asterisks in the table itself as there was before. I also, um, I, I think it could apply directly to the third-party initiated inspection and that's where you were really trying to do it. I think that remains to be cleared up a little bit. Um, it, it doesn't make sense, um, when you're talking about, uh, if the party filing is claiming to be sound to be correct.
Uh, I interpret that to mean that the person who's making the complaint, that that is a valid or founded complaint, whereas I think what they really directed will say is it is unconfident, that can even, yes, it's either the other ones.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or maybe not, now that I see that, um, but maybe just kind of clear it out.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll do like that.
Thank you, thank you.
Other council comments? Any concerns about moving forward?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, we are a little after seven o'clock, can we do the next one quick?
I can go over it quick.
Okay, question.
Um, so Mary Council, during your budget workshops and budget process, council made a decision to put some uh one percent of auction sales tax that we have on our utility bills, uh with American Energy, they're one percent from H I scheme. If you achieve this amendment to the state's franchise, then with the American Energy, what's needed um and staff have been working with American Energy to track this, uh have a date that's been needed to own the electric and natural gas from China to allow this franchise scheme. Now included in the workshop, that was proposed franchise work, that's most few key highlights that we may give is the proposed uh one percent franchise fee on all American energy. Uh, wonderful in the ass sales within city's program that will be replaced with the one percent uh will replace one percent loss, we need to have a lot of those to be issued. And this might cause any financial changes for residential, commercial or non-profit um rate pairs and with that, so it is a um, you know, net neutral cost, however governmental accounts, uh with the exception of city accounts are going to be subject to the franchise fee starting July one of twenty twenty four. This delay is really allowing the one next time to plan and budget with change. Uh, it is worth mentioning that all the other um natural communities that charge franchise fees, I think you fire that out of the um government units in these communities. Um, for the franchise fee in city will be one through two, uh making changes once every twelve months and due to the way an element change currently going from twenty twenty four uh the city under the franchise agreement will be restricted to making a further chance for change until July one to make them. Uh, the agreement is so it's a twenty five year agreement that will go on effect um on publication ordinances. Um, but there are provisions that are allowed to be amended or terminated at the fifth, tenth, fifteenth and twentieth interview, so to make changes. Um, with that, I would know Tyler from American Energy is here, I'm certainly happy to answer your questions. Uh, the council finds the proposed ordinance acceptable, the next steps would be the city council set public hearing, we know that we do have that on consent agenda um to set that for the public hearing Monday fifteenth. I hope that you have any questions the council has to see.
Lots of any questions?
To do there. But Mike, the first question has to do with the the duration, I mean, is there any uh is there any reason why it has to be that five year, I I certainly understand those five year increments as far as that goes, but twenty five years, could it not be just ten, and then we really got that for ten?
Um, it, you know, I I would refer a little bit to American Energy on that. Uh, what I would say though is it's pretty typical for uh agreements of that length. Maybe you think about infrastructure, we're asking American Energy to make a community and for them to have a return on that infrastructure investment, they're they're making better, they're not longer term commitments for the um the communities in the past life. Um, we only gave them American Energy one year, uh so not quite as long, um, but I would say uh the the five year kind of you know, to go in and amend and turn me, that's actually one of the usual change agreement, using this entire ring and that's it, so we know in that, so so we can be pretty unique in that.
The other question I had is, uh, let's say, I think I had a speaking, the governmental accounts in there are orderly, any changes that we can make to the franchise. But let's say that uh we decided uh July second of twenty twenty five that we wanted to eliminate that franchise fee at that one time. Uh, do we have to wait another two years to get the government entities up to adjusting, it seems rather foolish that we would have to wait for that once it's been issued.
But it's. It, I mean, what what it said with American Energy is any increase or decrease, just there in the path. You can be able to do all that, we also have regulatory, we have to do, so we have great length, we've been American Energy filed to link work of that delay because ultimately we said, well, we change our order, that's not the way, and we're pretty insistent on twelve months, I would have heard to the right community and. That question to see.
The the last question I have, and perhaps can be directed there is, um, this franchise fee has to be signed off by all parties, the sum of them, in other words, we can't um dictate these uh changes ourselves, correct?
Exactly. The the fees itself, well, the franchise fee itself ultimately it's a city decision on on that, uh but American Energy has to accept the franchise at the end of the day. Uh, so they'd certainly say, no, we're not, we're not going to accept that, and then our franchise, which is still in place, it's still factored, we're remaining in place, uh just without franchise fees.
Alright.
And I think, and and this is an exclusive franchise, is that correct? It's it's not an exclusive franchise, in fact, we have another franchise that actually worked out here recently, Black Hills Energy on natural gas, these are above fifty uh customers, so we will go back to the Black Hills and actually finish this and see a similar thing now with the natural franchise agreement was put in place, it was actually in it that allowed the city to go to the franchise fee in place, we did not have a similar one in my community.
Those are parts of the community that are served by both Black Hills and American, or is there there's a certain part of the community that's certainly exclusively by the American, certain parts are strictly.
So, yeah, again, right now, everyone even has one service provider. Uh, but they're not exclusive franchise agreements, so if Black Hills decided, for example, they want to serve the entire city of Johnson under their franchise, really they could do that, and and I'm actually a leader of a network, we need to actually multiple natural gas serving the same neighborhoods, so that can happen. Another electric is exclusive, that's also by our utility laws and those those districts are separate.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any concerns?
There will have a lot of concern to decide, to decide when.
Great, I think you have your answer.
Thank you, Mike.
With that, we will adjourn and work session. There's even a slide starting.